Okay, all right. Good evening. This is the Dayton Historical Commission meeting on Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. I'm calling the meeting to order at six oh four. Six oh four, thank you. It's a Zoom meeting and it will be recorded and shown on Channel nine. A listing of matters of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And we'll just introduce ourselves. Gail's the Chair.
Irene Alley.
Rafa Delson, Vice Chair and Clerk.
Ron Smith, no title.
That also.
Dave Marvel, no title.
And Dave, as a guest, he put his application in to join us. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Secretary's report, we have the minutes of March 14th, 2023. Did everyone get a chance to see them?
No, because my computer is being repaired.
You want us to wait to accept them?
Go ahead. I don't want to hold you up.
I just had two little things, I think it was, Rafa. Maybe three. Motion to waive.
Maybe in red, wait a while.
No, no, not today. They're not in red. I didn't have a red pen in here. I got one now, though. Except, motion to waive the minutes and accept as amended, because we did amend them. Irene's name, it was Irene, not Pat. So that was one. And one was down in unfinished business. We're talking about the Crane House. He suggested that we create a storyline of Nat Crane and the house, i.e. was Nat Crane, it should have, who was Nat Crane? And then number three, doing the deed research. Did you, Irene, did you say you were going to do deed research?
I was going to try to go up, I haven't had a chance.
Okay. I just wanted to double check that. Okay. So those are the only things I saw. Did anyone see anything else? I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll vote. Irene?
Aye.
Rafa? Ron?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Our budget, our invoice for the eighteen ninety-nine was paid. And so now we have a balance of one thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. I didn't get a invoice from BP for our sign, but I will have to follow up on that.
Did you get the sign?
Yes, the sign, yes.
Really? And did you buy the two by fours?
No, Jim and Tom, I mean, we'll get to that on the end. For the FY twenty-four budget, I met with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee on March twenty-eight. And we're good to go. They basically accepted our budget as written. So that was easy.
Oh.
All right. Unfinished business, the James Briggs Garden sign, so they finished it. I picked it up. Rafa and I went once and it was kind of dark in the picture head. Got them distorted because when they tried to enlarge it from the PDF that we sent, so I brought them the picture picture. And they redid the sign. It looks marvelous. So I dropped it off. And it's downstairs in the Board of Health Building Inspector Office, waiting to go up. So I did talk to Jim Aguirre. And he and Tom Ferry are going to work on getting it installed. It will need the two by fours. They said they would take care of getting that, putting the sign together. Then I met with Jenna Montero regarding where will the location for it. And it's going to go outside the garden to the right of the gate, just off the path a little bit. So that people, even if they're not in the garden, will be able to see that this is the James Briggs Garden and the why it's important with the house, the description of the house in the picture. So what they're going to do is they also have to make sure it's accessible. You know, so then they have to just put a little path there. And I guess everything with the angle, there are certain criteria. So that will all be worked out. So that's good, I think. It took a long time coming, but we have it. The Nat Crane House Memorial. We're just continually working on the information needed regarding the property owners. And I did find some stuff at the society. And I lost a paper that listed some of the owners. I can scan this up and send it to you. I'll get, you can copy it, but it talks about the house was owned by Simeon Horton. Then Mrs. Adriana French, and Mrs. Addie Mosher, Mrs. Ella Harrison, and then Bill and
Ellen, Ellen, Helen.
Was it Ellen Harrison? Yeah.
Ellen Harrison.
Were the owners that just before it went to the Bristol Aggie School. It looks like Nat Crane, his family is from Berkeley. Have to do a little more genealogy just to figure that one out, to make sure that that is correct. Because there was also a crane shipyard out of Berkeley. I mean, was a shipmaster. A captain of the ship. So his probably his biggest claim to fame was that it was his ship with Stout George Briggs down in Cuba. When Stout George Briggs had his cudgel and went after the British because they tried to imprison him. The war of eighteen twelve? I can't remember.
Way back then.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So, so slowly we have some, I guess ship was the Sally, this ship. I think that's that. So we'll just continue gathering that and working to get that put together. Next is twenty-one twenty Water Street. There's no change in the status. We'll just keep that on so that we're reminded to watch that. I did have a thought. If we start, see if we can find a listing of people that do historic building salvage. So my researcher, Ron, over there, he's is good. Would you see if you can find like historic building salvage people?
But to do what?
Rafa, didn't you go down that road when you were trying to do the Nat Crane House? Weren't you looking at salvage people for the Nat Crane House? Or am I mistaken?
Was there a group over in?
I don't remember.
I thought you were, I thought you did some research. Maybe not.
I don't know.
I'm giving you credit for something, Rafa.
What is it that they do?
Well, for an example would be when Nathaniel Fisher House, where the police station is now, when they took that house down, that house actually moved to Mattapoiset.
Mattapoiset, that's who I'm thinking of.
So, you know, he, someone bought it and I'm not quite sure how that all transpired. But I know there's people out there that salvage either, you know, the house completely or the timbers of it or something, so.
Taking the mantos out and saving.
Yeah. It may not, it's still owned by a private entity, it's not owned by the town, but it could be information we could offer if you know, it gets to that.
You're talking about Water Street now?
Yeah.
Not owned by the bank?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah. So, but, and besides, that kind of listing for us would also be good as a resource to offer to others if we had, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure why I came around.
So you could look at it and give it a
Why it's gone?
There we go.
That was quite interesting.
Yeah.
Nothing to look at, no.
You looked at it, because I think there was somebody from Dayton that took down the barn from that house. That was the, where the police station is, the house went to Mattapoiset, but I think somebody in Dayton took the barn down. I can't remember who the guy was, but he got injured that night. Taking it down because he had a set time to take it down. He was taking it and was going to reinstall it somewhere over in Dayton. And I can't remember what his name was.
Yeah.
Get hurt pretty bad, or?
He had to go to the hospital, yeah. He had a head injury. But I think he was okay, but you know, he was trying to get the barn.
I will, I will do some research once I figure out what it is. I mean, these people will come in and, well, like, we do, and put stuff in the schoolhouse. Salvage work, interior salvage work. Which is one thing, but you're talking about the ex, the building itself.
There, yeah, there could be.
There was, there was something one time on TV with a company, it was two brothers or whatever, and I don't know where they were from. But they would salvage the house and then sell parts of either, like, the wood, the mantel pieces.
Right, they can make money by piecing it out.
I can't remember where they were originally from. They were Virginia or somewhere down in there, and I can't remember the name. I don't see the program on TV anymore. But they, it was quite the thing that they would take it piece by piece, number it, and
Right, right. Repurpose.
Right, to repurpose, yeah, yeah. Was this a note card from a Dayton?
I think so.
But it must have been a very prominent house at one time.
Yes, I think.
They have their own note card. That's neat.
Yeah.
I won't hold on to it like some people do.
All right. Um. Okay, next, does anyone have anything else on Water Street or Historic Salvage? I guess that's what you call it, Historic Salvage?
Were you a member of the commission when the house on Main Street?
No, that was just
Because maybe it was that house that we tried to get someone in for Historic Salvage. And had no luck. They did contact some companies. Maybe it was Mariner who did that, I don't know. The house I'm referring to, that it was on Main? And they took it down and now this brand new house is over there.
I know, and Bowens House, Bowens.
Bowens House, there you go. It was Bowens House.
I'll look for some
Little White House.
It's just the one in the corner.
Well, it's not really on the
It may have been, that may have been.
Was this where the
Before his time too, I don't know.
Because I heard about another house on Main Street that was demolished because there's some grandmother woman who was living with her nephew.
Yeah, but that was very recent. That's the corner of Main and one thirty-eight.
Yeah.
N'danka, last name?
N'danka.
Yeah, dog there.
Um. Right. There might be something in past Historical Commission notes too, about those salvage people. I'll take a look.
I don't know what year that was, do you?
No.
And this is, relates to the Water Street House, correct?
Yeah, just, just to be a little prepared in case someone asks.
Well, no, but I mean, yeah, yeah. The research goes, you don't want to talk to you know, demolition crew.
No, 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 no.
They're going to say, well, what is it? So I just had to know.
We're just looking for company names.
So it's a two, two-story, the Water Street.
To even know that, it's just like, who does, who does historic salvage, salvage? This is what the question is. Because that house has a significant history, so. All right. Um, next is the Historical Commission fiftieth. So I found there was a Heritage Committee that was formed in nineteen sixty-four. This is from Elaine Barley's update to the town history. So the Heritage, first Heritage Committee from nineteen sixty-four was Helen Lane, Elaine Barley, Charles Harris, Martha Campbell, and Helen Brown. Then at the town meeting, they reported that they were recording the important cemetery stones in town. And they spent, wow, they had two thousand dollar allocation, which they spent eighteen, about eighteen hundred dollars for the monuments and the plaque. That's the Jared Black, Jared Talbot Monument on Elm Street, I Google leave. So then in nineteen seventy-three, a town meeting on the motion of Helen Brown, they established the Historical Commission under Chapter forty, Section eighty, General Laws. Commission to be composed of seven members appointed by the selectman. So it is in the history. Now, Rafa, you're compiling all that, right? I can give you right there, this little piece of paper. Thank you. You were going to go look at town annual reports, right?
I'm going to start next week.
Okay. So we know we have to find out the beginning, commission members. Which will be in the annual reports. Okay. Anyone have anything else? Oh, um, historical commission fiftieth?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Time capsule, to be open fifty years from now.
You want to talk about that?
Well, it's just, it's like frivolous ideas. You know, I think it would be good to have a time, I don't know if it has happened before in the history of Dayton, where a time capsule residents are invited to contribute something historically significant, but it did a time capsule to be open fifty years from now. I like, oh, this probably would be dead by then, but still, you know.
How big would this?
Um, we can, we can decide, yeah, exactly. And we have to talk about the size, what contents will be there, where should be buried, the capsule? Who will be responsible for opening the capsule fifty years from now?
Any of us who left.
Yeah, it should be interesting, don't you think? For the seventeen fifty, whether it's just twenty-five years from now.
Get a grandchildren opening. We better go for next week.
And this reflects this particular time in history.
Like twenty twenty?
Yeah, people from next generation who did it, so they're like, oh my God, did they really do that? Did they have that, blah, blah, blah. They already know everything. Social media, what's going to be very big.
Well, if you buried it. Do you think somebody might dig it up if you told people where it was? So like, some people put it like in cement, you know what I mean?
Yes, exactly.
Of the cornerstone of a building.
Yes, there you go.
What if you just
The vault?
Put it in the vault and just said not to be opened and leave instructions with it.
Put one of those Christmas tags on it, do not open until
Yeah. Any town hall employee can just like, you know, try to peek.
About the cornerstone of the library, the new one, or the old one.
Yeah. And if it Carnegie Hall.
Carnegie Hall.
Hey, write that down. I mean, you could put it, I don't know, library is still new. I visited that last week, but I've been putting it in the basement somewhere, you know, because that's going to be blocked off for a few years.
Right.
The only thing is when they finally go and they get to open it up, and they're going to have to move it again, or whatever, to respect it.
Yeah. So it hasn't, it shouldn't be too heavy.
Yeah, that's, that's worth, you know, some conversations, you know, so.
Yeah, we don't want a tractor or anything like that.
Probably little memorabilia.
Like a Dayton Historical Commission pen?
A newspaper, probably bear, you know, like the Taunton paper, or a Boston Globe, or a Herald, or something.
We can do, anything that has mention of Dayton.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you put that in there.
The Taunton Daily Gazette article that
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Historical market program.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'd be related to commission, not necessarily history.
No, well, yeah.
The people.
Everyone, everybody.
You know, here's my
The little political scandals and stuff.
Oh, plenty of those. We don't have a building that's small.
Could like the the teacher that just got the award, the article about her, she just won that.
Yeah, okay, that's a good idea.
Very nice.
Very good. I like that.
Yes, it has to be a mixture of everything, like positive, negative, good, bad, as history.
Right, okay. All right, we'll keep working on it. We should probably set, when do we want to have this ready to bury? By the end of twenty twenty-three or in
Definitely before the end of, well, we can do it during the the firecracker festival. I think, I think Kevin Smith moved it to September.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
So we can do that.
September?
Yeah, September.
That's what I heard too.
What is that, anyway? I've heard that term.
Firecracker Festival.
Yes, I'm from Westlake, you know, they might as well say the moon.
Oh, no, this was townwide and it was two years, yeah, within the summer, July.
Mm-hmm, it started actually in July.
It's a firecracker festival, but there are no fireworks.
Go figure.
Well, what's the, I mean.
It was all of the commissions and volunteer organizations in town had an opportunity to set up a table.
Informational.
So it would be informational for you to walk around, and then they handed out like free things, balloons, little flags. Dayton Historical Commission pens.
Things for the kids to do too. They have like a small little
Base painting.
Base paint. Yeah, and in a band, I forgot what to call them, like
The toe jam puppet.
Toe jams, yeah, yeah, so.
There was a petting zoo last year.
They had some food vendors.
Yeah.
I think Kevin was worrying about, it was so close to Calchip, he wanted to move through the way.
Well, that was, what I was thinking was, yeah, Calchip.
Someone thought it was Calchip Park too, and we said, no, no, it's totally separate. So Kevin wants to just push it out a little bit.
And plus the first year was just like as COVID was ending, so people were anxious and looking for things to do, I think. Because there was a lot, a lot of people that came through. And then last year being the second year, the numbers were down. It's right near Fourth of July. It was hot. There's so many other things that were, you know, are going on at that point in time. People were out and about traveling and doing what they normally would have done. So I think that cut down. So September might be a better time.
Hmm, change the name. Harvest Festival.
Well, it's, that's not our call, so we're, we're just, we just go. And it's good exposure, it was good exposure for us. A lot of people came through and asked questions about the history and, you know, it was fun. Okay. All right, so we'll keep working on that. So the Mass History Commons, that revolutionary video thing, so I sent you the link, but I don't know if you tried watching. I tried watching it last night. It was the reenactor's conversation that they had, not about, you know, this, the revolution, the, whatever it was. I was like, well, that's rather not nice. So someone wasn't paying attention. So if they ever correct it, I will send it along because it's about, you know, the commemoration of the Revolutionary War. Um, okay. Next is our area forms. I don't know, quite know how you want to attack this. So we have three areas that Stacy filled out. The recommendation, the criteria statement form, that they are potential. So I have a tickle. Potential historic districts. Let me get a water. Continue on.
You'll never guess who the star of this week's Channel nine blast of the past is. Italy. I always fall over when I stick a plan to this. Who was it? Angie's. Patrick, thirty years ago. Just thirty years ago? Yeah. Oh, my word. I was shocked. Wow, very good.
I think Miranda's going to be thrilled when she finds out.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So we have three of them, the Brick Area, Lower Four Corners, and the South Dayton Village. And
No, I have one, thank you. I just don't have it with me. That's my fault.
So
Practicing for the IRS, I think.
I had watched Mass Historic Commission. Had a thing on National Registered District. So the first thing we have to do is they use these inventory forms to evaluate whether the areas are eligible to fill out a National Registered District Form. Does that make sense? Okay, so in looking at these.
What's your criteria?
The criteria is basically what you see on the back.
What one you go with first is?
Well, just generally, they all have the national criteria form, so they're they're evaluated to see if they are associated with events, activities, and patterns of development. Important people. The physical characteristics of design, construction, or form, you know, how if their integrity is maintained. And the potential to yield important information on history or prehistory or often archaeology. So when Stacy did areas, you included on the back form, the criteria statement, saying in her opinion, they would meet the criteria. You want to look at South Dayton one first.
Look into the back.
It says it's a potential, like South Dayton, back here, this form. Potential historic district and criteria A, and it's because of its association with events, activities, and patterns of development. So I don't know if we want to prioritize how we want to send them into Mass Historical Commission. If we just send all three of them in all at once.
How much does this cost?
To go to the Mass Historical Commission, I don't believe it costs anything.
It's going to be a a major issue.
The cost would come if they come back and say that it is eligible. Then your cost comes when you start the form for the National Register at that level. Because the
Well, that's, yeah.
When you look at the air, the forms from the National Register for the Quorum Shipyard and for the Wharf District, they are very involved there, much more than this.
Professionally done too.
Professional, yeah, preservation consultants, them, yeah.
No, I'm just trying to get a scope of you know, the end bottom lines to get it on a national historic register is ten thousand dollars. That makes me look at this a little bit closer than I mean, I'm only a guess right now. I would say go with one, sit at all three, and then get an idea what the cost would be to now give us an idea before we really get involved with it.
All right, so I can reach out, the guy, Ben Haley, is the Mass Historical Commission's person who does the National Register stuff. But I will reach out to him. Ask him about a cost. The thing is, once Mass Historic Commission determines that it is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. That puts that area on the state register automatically. Even though it's just eligible, because one, one of the areas in Dayton that was eligible was the Bridge District down here on Center Street. It was when the old Berkeley Bridge was there, and the little area, the two Standish Houses, and I forget what else was in there. That's still listed as it on the state register, even though it doesn't really That's still listed as it on the state register, even though it doesn't really exist, was only um eligible. It never was. Ever made into a district.
I have a question. Play it. It's a little off record, but you know the building after you go over the bridge, that old, old building, was that part of the? The guys that come out to turn the wheel for the bridge at times? That's what I'm thinking of.
Oh, that big.
Oh, that policy pass, but you always see a light on, but you never see anybody inside.
On the right?
Yeah, I always try it.
Yeah.
Was that like the guys who control the bridge far as?
No, 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 they lived, um.
Dyton had a bridge tender.
Oh, I remember that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So those are the guys.
Oh, I think of the small house.
Soon as you go over the bridge, a small house right there. It's on the Berkeley side.
Oh, yeah, I know. I don't.
Yeah.
It's always, nobody's living in that.
You always see a light on. That's about it. Like they're trying to maintain it. Okay.
Yeah.
Want to go ahead and.
I thought you meant the big white house on the other side. I think that was the Babit. Oh, it's there that they've got the. It looks like still part of a farm. It's. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Petting zoo.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a historic house that is there.
It's a beautiful house.
Yeah, there. Um, and across the street where they've got their uh little park right now, there was a historic. There was there. Yeah. And it fell apart. In fact, it was. That was our Ashley's, yeah.
Is that, we know when they declared the Quorum Shipyard. As a National Historic District. Why didn't they also declare Pleasant Street? As a.
Or you can declare National Historic District.
Well, I don't.
My other question. Can have districts, a lot of houses, or you can have individual.
You can have, yes.
And I'm not sure which way to go depending again on.
Doing individual houses. You have to have the homeowner and you have to have interior pictures.
Hmm, which is not a bad idea.
Involved, even if. You get to the point where you want to have these in the National Register of Historic Places. You have to have the, the homeowners involved. You know, um, when you do an area, you. Don't have to have in the interiors.
Ex- exterior.
It's just. Period, yeah.
Karen Gannon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good. You know, I'm, I'm picturing my mind uh. Up by the mill. That group of housing, rare. Rather large group of housing for a district, the mill.
Which mill are you in? Of the.
North Dyton.
Correct, that, that, yes, and that. If you look on Mac, was when you look at the area forms, that Mount Hope Finishing Company area in two thousand, what, like twenty years ago?
Least, yeah.
Was. Checked off as, you know, a potential National Historic District. And then. It's staying there. No one ever acted on it. It's forward. So now the district has changed so much. Hmm. You know, that's why we're kind of working to do that again.
Yeah, but I mean, the size of the district enters into it, the cost. Into it. We're trying to pick a. A trial balloon of whatever, a learning curve.
I would say the South Dyton where the shipyards were and everything.
Seems to be a lot.
One to try to start if we're gonna do it rather than all three. Okay. Because that one has more. You've still got the wharps there. You've still got some of the houses. I would try this one. But it also is, goes along with the Quorum Shipyard and the worst districts, yeah. Okay.
My, my feeling is. Based on what I just said is the use of a NEM, which is. The classic. Historic District in New England. It isn't just a bunch of old houses.
But you're looking at lower four corner, the lower.
Yes, I guess. Oh, yeah. Little corners as. A classic without not a lot of structures necessarily. When you look through the report on it, it's. It's much more. Impactful, I guess.
Two houses? Where'd I get that from?
Oh.
I did read them when I got them.
Is the map.
I know, but the little, since I thought it was two houses. Thirty-five acres.
Yeah, including the cemetery.
Yeah.
No, I'm just suggesting a.
That one too is inclusive of some of the older Bristol path.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Yeah.
The great cemetery, the church, the Unitarian Church, or whatever the title is for.
The brick church. Lower Four Corners has the. Community church.
Yeah.
Either Pedo Baptist Convocational Society, which is still that, it's legal name. Okay, twenty properties. The area consists of twenty properties.
Okay. Uh, this is my feeling.
So you think lower four corners?
Yeah. Dyten M. And you're talking Dyten L, which is, that's another, that's.
Because this has the, the original like shipbuilding and, you know, where Dyton was. Seated and things like that, that would be. Okay. Do you have any input?
Can we just send letters to the owners of these properties? It was, how long, you know, we want like, would like to turn your district into a National Historic District. Yeah, we know.
Well, no, I, the first thing I think we have to do is go to the Mass Historic Commission and see if these areas would be even be eligible. And then we go to your step. Um, cause you have to include the, the property owners in the conversation.
So is Stacy going to help us with that?
With, with the conversation?
With the uh. Uh, applying for a National Historic District.
If once Mass Historic Commission says it's eligible. Then, then, then you have to do the whole thing to hire the preservation consultant. You'd have to do a um. Request for proposals. In request for quotes, the same thing.
Well, I think they've already done that, right? The back page. They've, they've done a lot of the.
A lot of, yeah. When you look at the actual. Results. From the court, like on the Quorum Shipyard, they are. This has detail. Those applications have even more detail.
There's a lot of bureaucracy, like web tape involved.
Yes.
They actually define them on the back page, or at least the one I was looking at a little more closely.
Well, I think she's going, isn't this like an overview of the areas itself and what is contained in the areas? Right, and this is in the opinion. Of the preservation consultant.
Right.
Not.
Right.
Mass Historical Commission.
Right.
So. I think we send the, we will send the whole thing to them and say. Is this what, you know, we would like you to review this for eligibility to. For possible National Register Historic. Whatever it is. You know, eligibility.
See a red house on this one.
Very nice red house. So.
Still own that?
Nope, sold it a couple of. So I, there's a question of cost. I don't think the Mass Historical Commission charges to do that. Part of their mandate, but we can check that. Um. I also questioned whether they wanted it through email or a hard copy. I thought of that this afternoon. You know, if it would have to be a hard copy that they would want with a cover letter.
Taking a survey. If you still own the red house, what would you have said?
I sold it a few years ago. Oh, I'm fine with, you want to send in just one? I think the Lower Four Corners is an excellent example. Like Irene said, it has a little variety of. Old homes, churches, you know, it's got a smorgasbord of stuff in there. Okay. I think that would be an excellent one.
No, I mean, as a homeowner, I'm asking if you had been, or if you still were. What would you say?
Right now. Until that answer, if it's okay, the homeowners aren't getting involved. So you put in the cap before the horse. Send it in.
We need you in Washington.
So, all right, so. We'll start with Lower Four Corners. Sounds good to me. You don't want to do the shipyard then. Well.
Oh, no, that.
The majority are saying Lower Four Corners. I would almost say I'd send them both. You could see those.
Which ones? So four lower corners and what?
And South Dyton.
South Dyton, no.
The only thing I was pushing South Dyton because of the shipping industry and everything else. Mm hmm. And where that was like the port of entry for a lot of stuff.
They're already a historic district.
No, that, no, South Dyton, no. Just the Quorum Shipyard.
And what's the thing down the street there?
The wharfs, it's the warp.
Yeah, Wharf District.
The Wharf District only includes the three wharps and I believe. The Customs House.
Hmm.
Um, Andrew Spooner House, the Eddie House, Darius Perry's House.
But that is exactly what you're describing, right? That. History of Dyton is.
Yeah.
That's what it did.
But I mean, she's including. Other houses up further. Right. It was kind of like a long. It, it actually touches on the Quorum Shipyard on Water Street, went up Main Street. Pleasant Street touches on to the um. The Wharf District. At one point in time, if you look at on Mac, there is also another form there that is called the Lower Taunton River. Um, area. Mm hmm. I think it's H. And it's, it's a huge area. It actually includes. Some of the segregation um coming up all the way up this way.
Okay.
It's huge. And I know at one point in time. Must have been in the eighties. Cause my mom got a letter and I have a copy of the letter from the Historical Commission that they were considering it for a district and. I don't know what happened to it after that. I found the letter in her stuff. Um, I know it never. That whole area didn't become. Um, the district, it's just. The wharps and, you know, Quorum Shipyard.
Who's the driving force behind those?
I was gonna say, didn't we talk about this last month and weren't you going to? I, I think it's the heritage. I haven't, yeah. To let, or whoever, yeah, why?
That's right.
Why? Yeah. About this, yeah.
Moderators.
Uh, yeah. So.
Oh, we don't have to decide tonight.
I think we should get one of these going. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I mean. There's no reason we have the information, just. I'm fine, whatever you want to do. My personal preference was the lower four. Okay, lower. I'm fine with that. I'm not.
Please make a motion.
You make a motion.
Make a motion that we. Use as a trial balloon. Us, it's Dyten M, which is the Lower Four Corners, I believe.
I'll second that.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And we'll vote. Um, Irene? I'd still like the one.
Well, that's all right. Those are allowed, you know.
No.
You, you wouldn't believe it, but yeah, you can say.
Say no to that.
Okay.
Okay, the other one, but that's.
Okay.
Rafa?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi, and I'm also an I.
It was a field to get out voted.
That's okay.
That's all right. It's, it's, it needs some people to speak up. We're not robots, you know.
Yes.
Uh.
Get your mind, your own mind, so.
Yeah, that's good. And I. My opinion, um, the second one we do is the South Dyton one and. Then, then the third one would be the Brick Area. So let's see what happens with going forward with the Lower Four Corners. And we'll go from there. Okay.
Did you realize that the Carnegie Library is not in the Lower Four Corners?
It touches on it.
Talking about the recommendation page, which is. Thing I go by. Back page. Found that very interesting. Cause I was researching the Baptist Church and I said, gee, that's all on here.
Because it came too late, right? It's nineteen, eleven, nineteen. Right, because this, this survey was. Building. Building.
Yeah.
Right, I understand that, but the reason it's not considered in the Lower Four Corners is because the date it was erected, that's all. Yes. With nineteen hundreds. Yeah. And they're looking at seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds.
So.
No.
Then that's why it's not there.
That's right.
And it wouldn't be in the district, would it?
No, no, but it's okay. Yes. Yes, it would be in the district because the district. Incumbences all of the buildings, even buildings that are non-contributing buildings. Into a historic district. Because if you look at the Brick Area one, there is a brand new house that's listed there as a non-contributing. Um, one, and there's also. In South Dyton, there is a non-contributing house. And it's the house that's kitty corner from my mom's house that was on Pleasant Street. Next to Boucher's.
Actually, I think there's one in the Wharf District too. I was reading that the other day.
It would be on the corner of Muddy Plain and Pleasant Street if it, yes.
Garage thing or something. I, it just caught my eye is. I don't know what that means.
So what is a non?
Non-contributing.
When non, non-contributing, it means that it's. District is around it.
Yeah.
But it is not contributing to any of the historical significance of the area.
For not all the funds.
Not yet. Okay. I, I think that's exciting. We have a start.
Amazing compiling all this information, space.
I know. It's amazing to read.
Very, no, they're very.
All their pictures.
Yeah.
Cause they.
I did a quick read. I need to sit down with it again because I was looking at it, trying to look at what she had written. And going back to the house and trying to. Right. But I mean, pictures are. You know, quite the test.
I became very intimate with these here a month or so ago.
Oh, yeah, you did all those notebooks, which are finished and have been. Um. I delivered. The notebook to the assessor's office with a, a large scale map and they were very excited to get it. And then I gave. I have one that's gonna go on the archival at Town Hall. And then we have one that's ready for us to use. And I gave um. The library their thumb drive. With the forms on it and I also included a street index and um. The final report from Stacy so that they have that. So they'll get that. And the um, I'll drop one off at the planning board. So everyone has all the, that they need. But that was a monumental job.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Oh, you're taking me forever. Um, and if you, when you do read in these, every now and then you come across something where Stacy will say more research needed. Hmm. So as I was reading it, I was making notes of that so that we have a listing of what needs more research. Um, then I know it says it on some of the forums too when you read the forums, so.
As an aside, but kind of related to this is. Is anybody here on the bike trail, bike path thing?
Yeah.
Did you see the work that was done on the research of that area by the? Whoever is pushing that bike trail?
Done with that thought, hold that for a little bit.
Okay, you, I don't want to lose it.
No, because we're gonna keep, keep up our agenda. All right, um. Our next survey, the survey update that's doing. Mount Hope and North Dyton. Um. We had a request from Stacy to extend the contract to September first for completion. So I talked with Mike Mullin and he agreed that we could do that. So phase one, all of the draft forms will be done by June thirtieth. Phase two, which is where we get all of the information back to her by July twenty eighth. And then all final products hard deadline of September first. So um. That's got a little behind. Historical markers. Rafa?
Yes, we received an application for historical marker from the Standish House. Located at twenty eighth Center Street. Everybody familiar with Standish House? Never been there. But um, so I checked all the information that Stacy provided. I don't see any. Anything bad.
Do you have a picture of the house?
Yeah.
Turn that. I've seen it, let's see.
Second one over the bridge? Yes.
Oh, that's a beautiful house.
Not the first one, but the second.
Yeah, I always, I always love to look at that. This sounds. That's the Aggie School of.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah, I know it very well.
Pass it on, it's all right, we'll trust you.
And inside is lovely.
Yes, I went in for a meeting. With me, uh. Yeah, was the superintendent, she stayed, she was living in that house for a while and. I've been in because I had business with the Aggie School. They really did a, a nice job.
Even though it's um office space now, they've kept the details of the home. The stairway is gorgeous, all the moldings and everything, the doors, the fireplaces, that nice job.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the historical marker application for the Standish House located at twenty eighth Center Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Irene can have it. There any further discussion? We all know the house that we're talking about, okay? Okay, we'll vote Irene. Hi, Rafa.
Hi.
Ron.
Hi.
That's.
And I'm also an I, okay.
Yay. Speaking about the markers.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the last two. Did we ever approve those?
Not yet, because it's still pending research. Cause remember, cause we couldn't find, when I went to the uh registered D's, I still couldn't find any information about Woody's house or his neighbor's house.
So you're gonna go look at the grantors and grantees, right?
I will have to go back.
Yeah.
Take a look. Yeah, he's getting very impatient, so asking me, Woody.
When do I get my marker? Is that the capital W, Woody?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you know, yeah, oh yeah.
But also you you reached out to um Bob Peach and he's not responding.
The, our um.
Black guy?
Yeah, he hasn't responded at all. So I was able to find a se- another purveyor. Um Honan and Honan located, yeah, located in Winthrop, same price, one twenty five.
And where are they from?
Uh Winthrop, Massachusetts. Yeah.
And you showed him the picture.
Could you, is there a way for you to duplicate this design? And he's he's sending a a mock design and everything looks fine.
Oh, good.
That exactly.
Good.
So. So, yeah, so I'm.
That's excellent, right? Right, so.
So I'm gonna, I should contact, is there an email address for, oh, Derek Costa, is he gonna be the uh contact person?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'll hook him up, I'll hook him up with the uh new sign major.
Right.
So instead of paying them and all.
Isn't there also some discussion with asking the town about town-owned buildings?
Yeah, and me, I didn't get any response. I'll have to ask again. Maybe wait till budget season is over, I don't know. Um I'll I'll pursue that. I don't, I don't really see a problem, but I don't want to pursue it without.
Is there a?
Mission, I guess.
Something in the back of my mind.
Yeah, it's the.
Yes.
There is, okay.
In so in this case, it would show on up, very, that's just Dayton Historical Commission. And then Standish House circa seventeen ninety six and below Dayton, Massachusetts.
Yeah, all right, well, something that stuck in my mind.
Didn't there a picture in the application?
That's what.
Yes.
So I go into my brains.
Our goal is to uh have a first one hundred.
Glad we budgeted for.
What about you? What are you gonna get your historical marker?
How many do you have right now?
Seven so far, two pending and then this ten business attempt.
Ninety two to go.
Yeah. How old was your house?
Nineteen hundred. I I've got to do some research on it.
Yeah.
Once you add on, it takes away from the house, right?
Yeah.
There was something.
Actually, we're looking at the age, as long as you can, has a historical elements to it and everything, you're okay.
We did as an addition on our house, we kept in line with what was there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people, all the original. DeMello family.
Right.
Did not believe, could not believe that the addition looks like it was the continuation.
Right, it does.
Have you seen?
Yeah, they're pretty. Very nice, I like those.
And that's the year.
Oh, okay.
And the first person who built them.
Wow, very nice.
Okay.
You can't show it on TV, yeah? Well, no, I mean, just so the people would know what we're talking about.
Well, next, next time I'll put my computer up and we can share it. Um, next is the segregated schoolhouse. So we went, we had a meeting there on Friday. Um it was interesting, um so that our new people could see the schoolhouse. I also talked with um Jim Aguirre about the schoolhouse and the sign. Um the sign is going to be um in the sign project, fix sign fixing project because they're gonna. Do that sign, install the James Briggs sign, and I believe there's a sign for Town Hall. So there'll be a whole. Lot of signage stuff going on. Tom Ferry actually looked at it too. Um and they all agree that, you know, it needs some work and probably Mike Barabee will be doing some of the work on the sign. And he does good work. So. I also asked about um. Painting and power washing and and they could probably get the building power washed, so at least that cleans up. But probably would need some painting then. The problem is, is that the budget. Is kind of like. Not there for the the painting.
Are you restricting on what kind of paint you put on that house because it's historical or?
It would have to, it's historically white, so. I think I'd want to maintain white.
I mean, you don't have to buy a special paint for it, right? Yep, okay, good.
I don't think so. I mean, we could actually research it. Cause now that I said that, I know when they did the. Um Winslow Davis House, that was always painted white. But because that's a seventeen nineties house, seventeen seventies, seventeen nineties, the actual, they didn't have white paint. It is more of that linen color because of the linseed paint that they would have used, so.
Should I ask somebody who was on CPC when they did that house?
Oh, that's easy enough because the records are at the Historical Society too.
I mean, yeah, too.
The paint we were given for the one-room schoolhouses is plain out of lows.
So it's plain out of lows.
So we get a white paint, right? Is it a flat probably to keep?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't like flat, myself personally.
I'd like to go ask myself. I just worry about historical restrictions that they want. There is a problem to that, because we have to. Address when you get to that point.
So I think, you know, like we walked around the the school, we looked at everything, you know, I guess it needs painting, it needs to have power wash. Um the sign needs to be done. The um yard, you know, could do, use a little, clean up a little, spruce up. Dave was there and he mentioned, you know, possibly like a boy scout project for that. Um painting, we have to check into volunteers could paint it.
What about the nuns?
I've often seen nuns paint buildings on one thirty eight.
I gotta drive down more side of town. Yeah.
And carried.
I mean, we can save a lot of money if we get volunteers to paint it, but then we had that dirty word of, shouldn't say it on here, a pavilion wage. You know?
So we'll ask the questions. Cause I think that is a good question.
I was very much involved with the Chestnut Street Church that was built twelve years ago. And we relied heavily on the county sheriff's chain gangs. They did most of that work in that church. Plumbing, electrical, what a resource they turned out to be.
Yeah, I do remember.
And we, the only thing they had to do was give them a ham sandwich. Right, and I don't know. But what, what a resource. He said, he really said, what would you like to do?
I don't know if that program is still being offered.
One I thought of that really would make a big difference.
They used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so. So.
They really weren't changing. They was like.
That, I don't know if that program, but that's a question to be asked, you know, so there are some.
A good question.
There are some things to be pursued for that. The other pieces of it that we talked about was what does the building need?
Yeah, it's not especially that just run.
Yeah. You know, know the building needs, you know.
Um you're gonna do something with those windows too. Those are bad.
Windows.
Yeah.
Anybody look at the roof? I didn't. I'm not saying it's bad, I'm saying, did anyone look at it?
We looked, yeah.
But the opposite side looks pretty good. Yeah, the south side looked pretty good. Side had, maybe somebody knows when the last time it was.
Yeah, I don't know.
Was it in hailstorm? Uh reconstruction of the roof.
Some of that information might be in um what you got from Joanne Racine.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
About, you know, the prices are probably like way off, but.
Yeah.
Dates when the roof was done, um what they were looking to do. We have to ascertain that there's no lead paint in there. I know part of it started to get removed, but that stopped. The issues that you're gonna be dealing with as far as using the building is gonna be ADA accessibility. Um parking.
Secure, safety, security.
Bathroom.
Bathroom, second egress. For emergency. Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about taking that window out and put a doorway in there.
Wifi connection.
A lot of it resolves with the, the obvious question that we all asked when we were over there is. What to do? What is, what are you gonna repurpose it to? I mean, I was giving something, I was thinking over the weekend about that, like those, that furniture with the uh. Oh, here's the thing, if we want to use it for a meeting room, that furniture would have to go like the desks and the chairs, but then again. That's so historical too, you hate to.
Right.
Hide or do we do it like the school, you know, up in Rehoboth where it's just, we put everything back into place and. You keep that year going, you know, keep everything close to that year and, you know.
Well, we had talked about using it as a small community room versus museum was the other thing that had come up. We figured about thirty occupants.
That's where you heard thirty, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wrote thirty down here.
Uh you'd have to check your occupancy.
Yep. And then the other thing too is with like with the parking, we talked about it because it took us a while to get across the street. Before somebody, you know, the whole group of some other hand and chickens going across the road then.
Busy intersection.
But then the other day when I went by, there was a truck that, I was in a line of traffic waiting at the light and there was a truck that came up. One thirty eight and he must have gone from zero to sixty, blowing up towards Town Hall. I'm like, oh, this is good.
Good thing you weren't crossing, right?
I was in my car, is he, I felt the uh.
Oh, this, yeah.
By me there, I'm like, oh my god, and I thought of you saying, oh yeah, this is kind of treacherous to go across the road.
If we kept it to that year. Do we get grandfathered in? Probably not, where ADA is sort of like, we don't have to worry about it, that those days are fine, okay?
I think, yeah. And especially if you want to open up to be um to the public, you've got to be ADA compliant.
Which is good to have, yes.
Yes.
I think by law, every, every building owned by the town should be.
Be ADA.
Okay.
Client, because that's like what they did over here. They, they made it ADA compliant.
True. So maybe we should sell it. So maybe we should sell it.
Or move it there.
We can move it.
Yeah, but it's cheaper. But you still gotta ADA it.
Yeah, it would still happen.
That's the law, you can not have.
And in that list, there is. Opportunities to sell it. Make it a mom and pop shop.
The town would love to vote for that.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Don't ask Weston.
We live in Dayton, we all live in Dayton.
It's the only remaining schoolhouse.
It's the only.
Owned by the town.
Owned by the town. So and the other thing is, you know, like we talk about using it as a, like a living museum. You're gonna be using it, you know, for the kids to come in or have programs, school programs. You also have to have the volunteers. That are gonna be willing to do that, you know, so um.
Like to be open on a Saturday.
Or to be open on a Saturday or some someone to be there during the school day if, you know, the school group decides to go visit like they do at Hornby. So you have to have those volunteers at the ready.
I think for my homework assignment, I'm probably gonna take a ride up and look at the other school, see, get a visit through there and see what they, you know.
They'll, they'll be opening up on.
On Sundays, that and June, I think.
Sunday in June?
No, Sundays, Sunday, Sundays in June. So say it's the first, third, or the second and fourth.
I think it's the second and fourth.
Okay, Sundays in June, July, and August, that's it.
It's not too far away, okay.
Um Dave Downs, I think, is responsible for that. Anybody have contact information for him?
Well, I have a whole mess of stuff that we, last year I shared with you guys from Kathy Potter. I had talked to her. I could reach out to Dave Downs too.
Are you on Facebook, Dave?
Yeah.
Dave Downs is on Facebook. If you wanted to reach out to him, go.
D O W N?
D W N S, yeah, I don't know if he goes up by.
You think he would be a, be enough where he might let us have a sneak preview for as like committee to walk in? Okay, that might open it up for more ideas for us, what to do after. I think their place, no, it's the same size, right? It's it's almost like.
Same size, yeah.
Okay.
Internal shots on YouTube.
Have a bathroom already? Did you write?
No.
Pipe still there.
No, our school does not have a bathroom. Hornby does. When they opened Hornby, actually, I do believe it's their outhouse. They were grandfathered in. But they've been continuously being used. I'll go through my stuff and get that all organized.
That was there two years ago.
Oh.
Yeah.
Two years ago.
Wow. Okay, that's the idea we always think of, all right.
So.
Be interested to see what they have to do for the town, far as uh. Ramps, bathrooms, lighting, the whole nine.
One of those dance caps. Today would be because of abuse, right?
Yes.
Yeah, child abuse.
You guys want, I could reach out to Dave Downs, be my little homework assignment. Okay, let's see what they have available for us.
I think. If we're gonna, you know, like you, that we had written our statement for it to be a living museum, we may have to change that a little bit. So to encompass um a dual purpose.
This is him, the guy on the left, not the Easter Bunny, that's what he looks like.
I've seen him before, okay.
He's in a lot of reenactment things.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's, and he's still down the Rehoboth Fire Department, so. Uh he probably still is. So his Facebook, he did a a piece recently on the burial place hill in Rehoboth. It was like a five part series, if you know that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. It's very nice, so that's the picture.
He used to do a thing on um old medical.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Medical equipment, scout saws.
Is that him back then?
Yeah. I think maybe he was on the amateur video over there, so.
Appreciate it.
That's probably why.
All right.
Very nice man.
We'll follow up on Rehoboth. We'll. Ask some, I'll ask some questions about the painting. Rafa, you're gonna check the notes that you have from Joanne. I'm gonna check on what they think the estimated occupancy would be.
Maybe it's something done by square footage, I assume it would be.
Yeah.
I assume it would be.
I mean.
Yeah, but how many people, how much room do you allow a person to have square footage wise?
Right.
I don't know.
Adult versus children. How many adults, how many children, or how many children?
Yeah, but usually occupancy is just, they don't have. Yeah, but usually occupancy is just, they don't have it, it's open, so base it on an adult and the kid will fit in with space.
Right. Is there anything else we need to, to review on for this house for next time?
I just want to say I'm happy that someone's finally doing something about the exterior condition. I understand the interior has issues, we have issues. But it's right on one thirty eight, people drive by that every day and it looks like hell.
Hmm.
So I'm glad someone's doing something. Thank you.
Not too many of them left. I think it's a good idea to save this one.
Right. It's our, it's our only one.
Okay.
Well, we could take the one back from the Historical Society.
One? We got one, yeah. Well, I should, when I say the, it's the only town.
Yes, I know.
Yeah. Okay. Have a little bit more of a mission on it, but baby steps, I guess we take. All right, um, new business. Are we good on? Yes, new, new business. Uh, Historical Commission Representative. Um, after much thought, I was thinking that I would very much be pleased to serve as the representative to CPC for the commission. So I'm putting my name out there.
Good for you.
He wants somebody to make a motion and.
Make a motion.
Myself.
Do I add my name?
Oh, so with the vote off. Ron also has an interest in being the CPC. We could do short straw, we could do so many things. Throw some dice. Anybody else interested in CPC?
Oh, but I make a motion that Pat Gales be our representative to CPC committee?
I stuck him that motion.
All right. And we'll take a vote.
Well, can I?
Oh, discussion? We have to discuss, um.
All right, one at a time kind of thing?
Hmm, I don't know. Do we have a vote?
I don't know.
I don't even know, you have to do it that way.
It's an interest, so I dominate him and I would hope one of you would second him. I don't know. And then do you take a vote and people, so someone's gonna win. Out of the five, you know what I mean?
I think we.
It's an odd number.
Dunk, but I just wanted to put that final word in on that subject. There's been a lot of things going on about that. But anyway, no, I just wanted it to be made official.
Why is it a slam dunk? Did I miss something?
No.
Okay.
Now you want your name out to be nominated? I don't know how we do it.
You're on, I, I'm gonna say after, I don't know how that works.
Well, I think, what they call is when you, when a person comes from another group, they call that at large?
No, no, representative.
Representative.
Okay, at large would be me when I was on there before. You don't have to go through the selectmen.
Right.
Maybe.
Right.
Within that group, how they determine who that's gonna be.
I thought there was still two openings at CPC, right? Not just.
Yeah, but only one for the Historical Commission.
But then again, he can go on a committee too if you wanted to.
It's not large.
Representing another.
It's already filled.
No, 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 at large ones.
Already have, they'll fill that.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. No, I, I really don't know the answer.
Uh, take the.
Why don't we put the democratic way is what we're doing.
We'll take a vote.
Take a vote.
Yeah. So also, well, Ron put his name in, I put my name in.
Mm hmm.
Alright, so.
Can we, we can vote for ourselves.
You can vote for yourself, yeah. Nice day out.
If you don't think you're good at it, then why should anyone else? So.
True, alright.
Now, so you have to have a nomination put in.
Oh, yeah.
Nominated.
Okay. Then I would nominate Ron.
Okay.
For the Historical Commission Representative to the CPC. Is anyone gonna second?
Ooh. Now you know what a slam dunk is.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just.
That, that motion fails for lack of a second.
I understand that.
And motion on the floor for me, for Patricia Gales. Standing, so will any more discussion? We'll take a vote, Irene.
Uh, what we're doing for. Now you're voting for Pat, yes or no?
Yeah.
Hi.
Rafa?
Yes, I.
Ron?
No.
Pat?
Hi. And I think I'll vote for myself, bye. Alright, thank you. I will serve well, I promise. The next meeting of the C P C is May eighteenth at five o'clock. Okay. Next is the volunteer application of David Marvel.
Oh, no.
So.
Might get voted out.
But no one will second it.
No one will second it. Be doing me, make my wife happy.
I came there and no one seconded it. So she not happy that you.
So I have to give a little narrative?
Narrative about.
Alright, so, um, I've been in this town for about, oh, over thirty years. Um, my first, I guess my first officer, how I was a grave officer, so I basically took care of the, uh, this, you know, the veteran stones and things like that. Um, worked with Dave Phillips when he was alive at the time, great guy. He did a lot of things with, uh, trouble kids that would come up and Dave say, hey, can you do me a favor, find us, find a cemetery and let's put these kids to work? And, you know, we were pretty fair to them and, uh, it worked out well. A lot of kids like, you know, doing that type of work. Uh, so after that, basically, um, it was a lot of history involved because one thing I do want to say was, um, he had everything on these three by five cards. And he had like hun, he had like what, fifty two cemeteries, I lost track where it was, something like that. And like, well, like all the time, I said, you know, that would look a lot better in Excel. He goes, oh, you want to give it a try? I'm like, well, since I don't ski, my kids go up north with my wife and the other kids. Yeah, oh, give me something to do to pass the time. So we put everything in three by five cards and then with Frederick's, uh, can't think of his phone, Douglas Frederick's, um, was the, uh, he was the one we just basically had a ceremony for.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyhow, we found him through the, uh, through those Excel cards, basically, because everything was, you know, cemetery lots and everything else, and we found him pretty quick. So after that, I, uh, basically went on cable with Ron, Jim, and then only, and I served under these guys for a few years till they retire. After they left, I stayed on. So I think I've been on cable. I lost track maybe fifteen years. Uh, we had to revamp the station, get things up and running. Then, uh, right after that COVID hit, so that's sort of like we took a hit, we had to learn Zoom, you know how much I went through that? Um, so everything was, you know. So, uh, then I was on the CPC for a number of years. And, uh, once that settled down, I pretty much wanted to take a break because I was on it too long. I think it was like six, seven years. And, uh, so anyhow, I thought I was gonna take a break for a while and then like I was overhearing you guys looking for somebody else to come on a Historical Commission. And I said, wow, I always like history. I think I'd like to give it a try. So, um, good with camera, good with pictures, uh, research, I can probably help you out with, um, you know.
Excellent research for, for some publicity.
Well, the other thing too, uh, cable would help with that too, you know, we get more out there, you know, we find something.
Hmm.
Um. I, you know, I think it'd just be a, uh, a great combo myself, you know? But hey, you guys have any questions for me, please let me know.
You had to put the flags up, didn't you, when you were at the Graves Officer?
Yeah, every year we did that with the Boy Scouts. These order them early from Woody and then like, uh, and then pass them out to the Boy Scouts and they have them up right before, uh, Memorial Day.
And you were very instrumental in getting that, uh, the phantom Civil War guy recognized in this town. Yeah, I know you don't like to push that, but it was true.
Well, the, the stone that he has was basically, I ordered that up in Vermont because at the time when they were gonna do the, uh, basically, uh, sorry, Mr. Frederick, I don't have your full name, but Frederick's basically had a small white stone.
Sten.
Anderson, yes, thank you. And, uh, so Anderson had a small stone, it was really small. I called up first, I think it was like the, uh, it was somebody out of, um, I'm trying to think, down the Cape, I had a call. And when they wanted to come in, it was take the stone out, put a bigger one in. But they want to bring machinery in, and the first thing I said was, there's a lot of history back there. We, we cannot have a machine going back there. Well, you know, we're really careful. I'm like, I'm gonna say no to this because I don't want to be responsible for anything, any damages out there because you can't.
You were the Graves Officer.
What's that?
You were the.
Yeah.
Officer, it's not.
Yeah, so I had a little pull, I guess, back then. So, so then after that, basically, there was a committee with those guys, uh, uh, Chows and all them were, they, they were all into history, so we had like a group email. I was going through like ordering the, uh, the stone and everything. The blue, the logo, the way things looked. We went back and forth negotiating. And then we finally get it ordered and we had it in there, you know, once in a while, take a walk over and take a look at it, you know, and just have a little smile, but, uh, it was something I, no one knows about, but it was like the stone was ordered by me. I took a lot of responsibility to, you know, make sure it was in proper order. It was the right fitting and everything else, so. It was good. It was like, you know, something I thought I could never do, but, uh, I was proud of it, choice again.
Good effort.
Yeah.
Good effort.
Going with that, one more thing today, we may want to talk about down the road, that Dave Phillips left me, and I'll bring it up one more time. Up in Hunter's Hill, there was a abandoned, uh, cemetery up there. You see headstones, you see a footstone. And the way Dave thinks that this story is gonna get lost because, um, I'm starting to lose the other guy's name, but anyhow.
Is that with Silas Talbot?
Yes, well, Talbot went off for a ride that day. And basically, the story was some Hessians that were hired by the British were there to take them out. Well, Talbot took out the Hessians and he buried them there. And Dave spry for so many years, probably get somebody to come down to verify. He came close of having like maybe somebody from Channel Five to come over. But it sort of like fell through. And, uh, so anyhow, I got it marked through the planning board. I went in there one day, say, hey, you know, the cemetery's, the cemetery is like right here and it, it's all vacant, it's one of you know that, you know, there's a grave out in there we need to look at down the road. Well, I went up there a couple of years later, you know, back a few years, and all of a sudden the developments are all going around. The only thing was left was this little island in the middle with the, you know, where the Hessians were buried. Last year, it bothered me because I wanted to go up there. So I started driving up to his, uh, Hunter's Hill. I couldn't believe all the construction around there. I mean, it's like, uh, where I wanted to go, there was fences put up, uh, keep out signs and I'd like to find a way where we can go up there and see if that cemetery's intact or developers came in and just took it over.
Hmm. That's an interesting.
You got yourself a job.
Well, if I can find myself a legal way going in there, you know, oh, justify it, I would take a, you know, probably take my kid up with me and then we'll try to find it again and take pictures. Hopefully we can find it up there.
So that would involve actually the Cemetery Commission too.
True, I could talk to them.
So a joint, yeah, so, anyway, um, I think you, personally, I think you bring a lot with you.
Mm hmm.
Alright, um, does anyone have any questions for Dave? Because we all kind of know you.
I think he answered a lot.
Pretty much.
Okay. Um, I will entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen um, that Dave Marvel be appointed to the Historical Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Irene?
I.
Rafa?
Hi.
Uh, Ron?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
And I am also an I.
Well, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Welcome.
Thank you.
You.
Looking forward to this.
Thanks. Um. Next is I included the draft vision from the Mass State, for the Massachusetts State Historic Preservation Plan. They're looking for feedback. Um, I'm I kind of like went through this and I, I liked a lot of what I saw in here. Um. Talks about ongoing education, um, both, uh, preservation trades, programs, documenting, and then it got me thinking about our own goals, vision. But that's another story, so, um, if anyone has any comments that they want to share at the top of the form, there was, um, a way to do it anonymously. You wanted to have some feedback. Does anyone have any comments on it or? Had five goals. One was for building capacity, which was to build capacity for historic preservation within communities and state. Documentation, and which is, um, document and protect the Commonwealth's historic and archaeological resources. Housing and economic development, support housing and economic development efforts with historic preservation. Um. That was kind of interesting because it talked about using historic buildings with affordable housing units.
Hmm, very common.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, sustainability and resiliency, uh, position historic preservation as an important piece of sustainable, resilient Commonwealth has to do with, uh, emergency management, um, kinds of things. And you had sent me some information about, um, emergency management. I do believe it was you, Ron.
Don't.
I.
I don't even know, do we have emergency management?
I don't know, we have to.
I think you checked through the fire department, I think.
Yeah.
Well, no, there used to be a, of a position.
I think the Board of Health had that a while ago.
Before that, there was.
You think so before that? Because I know they were trying to push it a few years back.
So, yeah, but they're talking about, you know, also with historic kinds of stuff.
Hmm, hmm.
Um.
Oh, quite a repurposing, a lot of towns have made out very well doing that.
Public outreach and education was another one of their goals, raising the level of public awareness about historic preservation, which is so important.
Hmm, I know we're losing it.
Yeah. Um, so those are that's their draft vision and goals and objectives.
And who is that again that's doing that?
This is the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
Oh, okay.
They, they make their plan, and this is gonna be eight years, I believe. Um. And it comes in a big book and you're supposed to like kind of align your goals and stuff to theirs, yeah.
So we can go off to their website for ideas and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I'll send you all kinds of information.
You guys have like a, uh, an email for your group? Do you go back and forth sometimes?
We, we're using our own emails.
That's what I mean, like, you know, you chat sometimes.
Oh, you can't chat because the open meeting was.
Oh, okay.
So like you can send information, but once it, a chain develops, that's deliberating, you know, and issue.
Okay, we'll stay away from that.
Stay away from that for, because of open meeting laws.
For discussions, okay.
Yeah.
For discussions, okay, sounds good.
Okay. Under correspondence, we got this PAL report letter, and it's actually an application notice for a permit from the um, Mass D C R for um, the Cotton River Rail Trail at Spalding.
There you go.
Um, so they're wanting to conduct an intensive archaeological survey. And this is basically serving as an information for us. I can, it's really quite large. I can get it scanned in and send it to anyone who is interested in reading it, or I can send it to everybody. So if you would, so like, basically, they send this to us for informational purposes, and then we'll get the final report at the end. It's the project notification process.
Are they looking for anything in particular, or are they looking to see what they find?
They're looking to make sure that they don't disturb anything, to see what they can find, basically, you know, because this is, that's a highly sensitive area, you know, for the early periods for the Native Americans and stuff. So they're looking to see if there's anything else. You know, if they go digging there, are they gonna disturb anything there? Um, that area, the Staples did a whole lot of work uh, in like seventies and eighties, I think.
Hmm.
Um, we're digging there, and they have um, quite a bit of findings that um, PAL does have uh, records of. Um, was that not Arnold's? Arnold Staples did a lot of that.
Why?
Because he was interested in.
Jesse did it on his own kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Weren't they doing something like that with Sweet Knowles?
That's where we're talking about, yeah.
Oh, okay, that was brought up like maybe a couple of months ago to the Selectmen, okay.
Yeah. So I'll put this scan and send it to everyone.
Okay.
For your nighttime reading. I'm sure you also, we got an email from Ken thanking us for a certificate of appreciation. And um, he enjoyed his time with the commission and he will continue to support our future goals. So we wish him the best.
Definitely.
All right, public input. See, any, anything else you want to say, Dave?
Yeah, public input.
Public input.
I'm not used to that.
Um, no, I really don't have anything to say. It's be interesting to uh, be interested being on this committee and really learn about the historical bet, historical values of of the town that we need to maintain and keep, so.
Great, can I just say one thing? The forms that Stacy's filling out, boy, she's doing a wonderful job. And I mean, everything's documented and footnoted and blah, blah, blah. The personal history is a loss. Because she doesn't know the personal histories of things. She's an outsider who's doing a wonderful job. Don't say that I'm not saying so. But the, what makes Dyken Dyken is the little stories about things? And none of that's being included.
I think that's where our role comes in.
Yeah.
To what? You're gonna amend her form?
You can add um, a continuation sheet, yes, of more detailed stories to these. Um, because certain, these are just like a snapshot, you know, and I know what you're saying, because it's just like, um, say Charles Whitmarsh and his wife, you know, were married and they owned a store is basically what she's including in that, but there's so much more to him, to him than that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, yes, you can add a continuation sheet to it. We can do that.
And where would you find that information? At the Historical Society? Uh, or the verbal kind of thing that people know?
It's, some of it's, yeah, lore.
Some of us are getting older, so.
Yeah, some of it's lore, you know, some of it.
Lore.
Legend.
Legends.
I like legend better, thank you.
Aye.
Um, yeah, you know, the anecdotes that you know, you know, you can't expand on it, yeah. And that's why, like, when, even in those, she says more research is needed sometimes, there's more to the story.
Yeah.
And it's also one of those things, as you go along too, you find enough facts, you know, what maybe it's not quite correct, you know, but it's correct is the details, you know, the resources that you use, so you may find something that predicts that. Um, there's a lot.
My other comment is, at paint class today, they said there was a, a woman, woman who did a lot of research for the Historical Society on the mill. Do you know who I'm referring to? Some girl, I, I didn't know the name.
Oh, Kelsey, Kelsey Mur.
Yeah, she, she gave a talk, right?
Yeah. Kelsey Mur.
Years ago.
Yeah.
Friendship Hall.
Yeah, I know Kelsey, yeah.
Hmm. I was gonna say, was I there for that?
Showed her master's thesis, I believe, on.
Right.
North Dayton.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wondered, like, when they were looking around North Dayton to do the piece on, you know, Milliken's area, did they go to the Historical Society and read, I mean, if she's, she's already done all the research, why do it again?
She's done, um, she, hers was mainly about the factory, the mill itself, not this, the houses and stuff around it.
Oh, okay.
You know, she talks a little bit about um, in her thesis, she talks a little bit about, you know, the area, but she's, a lot of it's, you know, the journalism, the unions coming in, you know, that, that part of the history.
Is the mill included in that re, the thing that, the next year?
Yeah.
So I would hope Stacy would.
Reach out to her.
Yeah.
And actually, Kelsey's work is, you can find it online.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I came across it one day. It was like, I know her.
Well, now that you say that, I'm sure I was there, and I think I wanted a more personal. I, I was expecting something different than what she delivered, so I didn't enjoy her presentation because it didn't touch on what I wanted it to touch on, but I was, I went to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that was the same woman they were referring to at the class.
Yeah, yeah, has to be.
Does the society give you like diaries or journals of previous Dayton residents, like?
There are some there, there's, yeah.
Where they live. Did Kelsey write that, the, was it Iowa, somewhere, I believe, there was a.
Yeah.
That's her?
That's her.
Oh, cool. That was a super report on the mill.
So, so the question, like, we hear like the Norton South, like back in the early days, where, where the South Dayton people were on farms, they get up real early in the morning. North of Dayton, it was like the industrial revolution. They had cars, they, they had more time. And I guess it was like, sort of like a uh, a little bit of friction.
Yes.
And I hear a lot of hearsay, but do you have that documented somewhere where, like you say, we, we start losing these people, have this knowledge, and then before you know it's like, the story's gone.
You're right.
You know, it's just like me beginning some facts about the cemetery, which I really think I want to get documented, you know, so.
When Pat and I were young, there was a big difference coming from South Dayton to being from North Dayton.
Oh, yeah.
Play with the South Dayton kids because they were better than we were. We were farmers.
Yeah.
We were, and so you're missing that.
Yeah.
So my son's generation, they didn't have that.
Right.
That died with us, sort of kind of.
Yeah.
We're not ready to die yet, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Getting older and need to have that somewhere. But when you've got the fire department history and you talk to my husband about it, there's a big.
Yep, the police department.
Blitz.
Yeah.
When he came on as chief.
Yeah.
Between the North Station, South.
And the police station is, the police people as well. No, I understand that, but I was a kid growing up in it, you know? Right.
Well, my husband grew up here too, so he remembers some of that because he lived in South Dayton.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where's North Dayton?
Right there, North Dayton.
Come on, you don't come, you're a rookie.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta be here a hundred and fifty years before you can listen to it.
So that's North Dayton?
Yeah.
To have like Jeff come in and talk about his memories of that and record it. Okay, Rafa, put it on your list of things to do.
Now you'll have a recording studio to do it in.
Rafa, you know, we do have a recording studio office up there, seriously, and if something like that, like to bring your husband in or somebody to talk about that era, that would be awesome. I mean, that's something that can be archived. The other thing I heard, like, when this guy built the mill, he wanted every brick counted. And I heard when the trailers came in to deliver the brick for the mill back then in North Dayton, he hires somebody, he goes, there's supposed to be six thousand bricks. I want you to count them all, make sure that's six thousand, because these people have a tendency, you know, of not giving me what I want. I don't want to be cheated. And they would count it out for this gentleman, you know? And then I heard the other story, like, you can go on and on, like, when they had the strikes, he had guardsmen up on the roof protecting the mill, you know?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we'd love to talk to somebody about those errors, you know?
Now, would Anne have a lot of history where she lives up on, no?
No, but there are people in North Dayton that, there's, there's, there's um.
Oh, I'm sure there are.
There's a lot of people, and I gotta think of this. I have a contact, um, check her at home, I check her name. Because her grandfather, her grandfather was involved in that.
You know, we could start with that Boston Post Kane recipient. Who is the oldest person, yeah, in town, and what do you remember?
Yeah.
Tell us about when you were a kid, and she was a North Dayton kid.
Yes, she was.
She's fine enough.
We do a series on this and just keep, I don't know, falls under historical, you know, what we're doing.
It's, it's promoting, yeah, the history, it's.
And it's recording the history, and she's not gonna be around forever. She's a hundred this year.
No, we definitely want this.
And she shop is attacked.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, you'd be getting accurate information.
We can set her up for a meeting when she's comfortable, you know, and we'll talk to her, you know, we'll have some questions for her.
I was gonna say, you'd have to come up with like a little.
Yeah.
So she could prepare herself.
Oh, definitely, give her time.
Yeah.
Barely soon.
But she's a very, very nice person.
Okay.
And of course, there is the town historian.
Or murder himself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's quite a bit younger than that Boston Post Kane.
Information.
So for the next agenda, let's put the, I'll put this on, you know, preservation and memories of town, and we'll talk about uh, a schedule, you know? What kind of things do we want in? Schedule it up, um, maybe start with um, Dorothy.
I think that would be lovely.
Um, you know, reaching out, so I'll put it on that um, the agenda for next time, okay? So, next is the Mass History Alliance. They're having a conference on June fifth up in Devens, Massachusetts. June fifth is in person, and then June sixth, they have uh, online. I've been kind of like watching this, kind of trying to follow it. I think there's gonna be a registration fee to it. It's kind of looks like it might be interesting. Um, send a link when I find out any information. Um, I was kind of thinking I might go. No, when is June fifth? Is that Monday, I think? But I haven't seen anything. It's first, they were just showing, um.
Yeah, Monday.
Yeah. That they were looking for a keynote speaker, then they had a keynote speaker and they, but they still don't have a, a registration fee or anything, but I would imagine there is one, so that has to be coming out shortly. Because we do have money in our budget to attend conferences. Next is the First Baptist Church. I was at the Historical Society one day, and two gentlemen from the First Baptist Church came in looking for money to help to repair their roof. And of course, I could, didn't have any um, money to give them.
And Mickey Mouse money?
No, but I asked Ron if he would do some research for them, and he did uh, some research, which I thought was very good.
Hopefully it gives them uh, some guidance.
Right, and I will share it with them. Um, and it reminded me, because one of the ones that you talked about was the CPC funding. And I do believe, and we may have to um, I'll put this out there for people to think about. It would, if we declared that church locally significant, historically significant, that would help for.
Oh, yeah, just like you did for the library.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's the church on Main Street.
The First Baptist Church, yeah.
How old is it?
Um, it's in here.
Yeah.
The one across from the library?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's a very uh.
The white one.
What was First Baptist Church, so?
The First Baptist.
It wasn't the.
That's a picture of it here, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
The First Baptist. Was it West Dayton?
And they split.
And they split.
Yeah.
Somehow they managed to walk off with the title.
Hmm.
So what happened to the First Baptist Church in West?
Still there.
What's today now?
Uh.
Christian, West.
Christian.
Christian church.
I think it's, I think that's right, yeah.
I used to go there, so I should know.
Wow.
Congregational church, congregational, it's a congregation, sort of like the, the nice church over here. Unitarian churches, Christian churches.
So, you know, I think that, I will share that with um, your cost or my contact, you know? We could go through that and at our next meeting, we can uh, the, you know, take a vote to see if it's locally, you know, significant, because it is touched on in this um, hmm, in the lower four corners form and.
Yeah, not recommended.
Yeah, but it's still.
Arsonage is, but not the church.
Yeah, but we can decide that it's local.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's the advantage of CPC is you don't have to follow the.
Right. Right, unless we agree tonight that it's significant enough to be declared locally significant.
Well, that would be up to CPC, you put an application into CPC.
True, but we.
Really the first.
No.
No.
We have to decide if it's significant.
Is there any history from that church? I don't know, I'm.
I'm sure there is. I don't know that much about it.
Then how would we determine if it was?
The Historical Society has quite a bit of church information.
Is it the architecture? Maybe it's built in a certain.
Yeah.
Architecture that makes it.
It got kind of blown up back in the fifties.
No, that's not good.
I think.
Yeah.
That's why it looks the way it does.
Okay.
Oh, was there a steep on top of this one time?
I think there was a lot of damage done.
Okay.
Whatever it was, you know, Stacy left it off the list, but.
Oh, Dayton history?
Yeah.
Hmm.
All right, let's do a little research on it before we make that, you know, locally significant.
That we'll know what.
So that we know what we're doing, yeah, yeah, okay.
Just because it's old doesn't make it.
Significant.
That's right.
All right, so we can do that. I know some stuff up at the Historical Society. Um, even I'll even call, file them and ask them if they have any history that they can share.
Okay.
And I will share the rest of your suggestions to Ron with them. Because um, you mentioned like Mechanics Pack, I know they have a grant program that they use. Um, our open commission positions with our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, we still have one open position. And um, so we're still looking for one more person, then we'll be full again.
Our recommendation goes to the Selectmen and they meet when?
They're meet.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, but we're not on the agenda, so it'll be in two weeks.
So it will be time for the next week.
Yeah.
I'm asking, yeah.
But they can revise the agenda, you know?
I don't think so. I think once the agenda.
No, you can revise. Yeah.
It's something to revision.
Yeah.
It's not that important thing.
But it is important.
I'm getting hog diet.
But our next meeting is May ninth, so it'll be done by then, yeah. Okay. All right. That's all I have tonight.
Okay.
I think we're good. I'll entertain a most to adjourn. So.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor? Uh, are you?
By I.
Wait a minute, okay, now.
Six, seven fifty P M.
And as the official time.